Thank you.
Okay, welcome everyone, everyone signed in. We're gonna start our meeting. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Mr. Fernandez.
Here.
We've been.
He's right there.
Yes, okay. Pete Patience, we've been asked to go into executive session by the prosecutor's office to start the meeting. Mr. Danza, can you give us the ORC for this?
Sure, it's uh, and I don't know if the clerk wants to add in, but it's one twenty-one point twenty-two G six.
Okay, so move a motion.
Make a motion that we enter executive session in accordance with ORC.
I was gonna say that's the.
One twenty-one two-two G six for details relative to security arrangements, emergency response protocols for public body or public office. If disclosure to discuss matters could be reasonably expected to jeopardize security of the public body or public office.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez.
Yes. Okay. Uh, Pete Patience.
Thank you.
Commissioner, you got a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion with region beams for executive session. One, two, one, two, two, G six for details, world of security arrangements and emergency response. We're close to public body or public office. If this resolution matters, this guy's could reasonably be expected. Deborah has security, public body, public office.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Sir Bernard.
Yes.
Sir Hernandez.
Yes. Okay, welcome back, everyone. We're gonna move on with our regular agenda items here.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Yes, for favor, you guys have the, yeah, thank you. Yeah, I got two agenda items if you don't mind.
Okay. Oh, thirteen and fourteen?
Yes. Thank you. Yeah, Gary Schaefer, engineers office. Number thirteen, I wanted to touch base with that a few weeks ago. You approved the closure on North level. Kind of sliding work sounds so sliding daytime closure. So you're gonna have privilege from last Thursday through November twenty eighth. That will take us to the end of the month. It will be closed daytime hours only while they're working. If they're not working, the road will be open dots. That's evenings. They say all work only. Over the open up. We'll revisit that closure as we get closer to the end of November. It sounds like it's gonna extend to the sound so that I can warn fashion officials. That we have, that they work through the best. Um, the number fourteen is a road repair agreement between the Board of Commissioners, our office. Select water solutions to resurface and make improvements to McMullen Street out there in Brooklyn, Texas. So they'll improve the road from state route seven to their access drive. So it's nine hundred and seventy eight. So about a year or so now we're working. You've got strapped to that agreement. It's amended based on their location or their access to that.
Hey, am I's right? Ribbon cutting Monday?
Monday, one o'clock. Mine's right Monday forty six.
Yep. Nick.
Back in the best pro shops and they've got the invitation out. Great project, Nick. I don't know if you have anything to say on that one.
No. As as of right now, that's our first successful T I D project, Nick Hoggins, planning commission. Um, first successful T I D project that we've completed. Um, it has a couple of things that need to be buttoned up in the spring. Like to our permanent striping, but the road is back open before Black Friday. Um, it's gonna relieve a lot of congestion. So we're excited to announce the ribbon cutting. It's under budget. Uh, so we're excited to announce this. Um, hopefully all the commissioners and all the T I D members can be there for the ribbon cutting. Um, and hopefully we're gonna have uh many, many more here to come in the future as we proceed with our T I D and and all projects. Listed through the county for economic purposes.
Here it is, Gary. Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Chris. Okay, so we're gonna move with the agenda item one. Spence reading in the minutes. The workshop dated November twelfth, regular meeting on November thirteenth. Two to approve bills, three prove additional appropriations submitted by the auditor dates November sixth through twelfth is listed. You know, cap. Four approved transfer appropriations submitted by the auditor between November sixth and November twelfth is listed. Five. Honor.
I don't know, but fifteen something else to explain this.
Two.
Christine Sastaric, auditor's office. Um, number five is very requesting to adopt the temporary appropriations to provide for the current expenses and other expenditures. For the period January first, twenty twenty six to March thirty first, twenty six. Temporary appropriations are just twenty five percent of the prior year's budget. Um, this gets us through to the end of March if we need to. We're hoping not to, but at least gets us started with the year so that we can make expenditures on payroll. And do it, you know, with the power as to our compliance requirements.
Okay. Next in there, we give you need to.
That's just.
All right. This is the Sarah others office. Our accounting system does it automatically for us. There's like a little button that we can push. That when we're rolling over to the new year, we can set the appropriations at twenty five percent. We don't really do any calculations. It kind of does it behind the scenes for us. Again, just to get us started for the year.
Okay. Move to. Nice.
Yeah, you're good.
You know, wait for discussion.
Yeah.
Okay. Move on.
That's me too. Okay. I just said then announced for October. Last week we had, we're getting kind of caught up. Last week we had you approve the then announced for um uh August and September, and then this one is for October. It's just those. Uh. Purchases that we make where the invoice date exceeds the purchase order dates and the higher vice protest is a uh. Exception that we can do. Anything under a hundred dollars can be approved by the county auditor and anything over a hundred dollars has to be included by county insurance. We do prevent it. We are still working on departments and trying to get those lists down. We've seen months where we haven't had very many, but then there's other months where we have a few.
Yeah.
That's it.
Uh, you want to do the Martha? Do you want to do this one?
Sure. Um, this is just uh number seven is that twenty twelve Chevy Malibu that we discussed a few weeks ago and then last week I. Um, we uh we've got.
Hey.
I'm sorry, Mark, you're from county auditor. I know. Uh, so. Um, so this is the Malibu that uh we're not utilizing. It has um. Like forty seven thousand miles on it. Uh, we spoke with the auditors, uh our outside auditors that's contracting the auditors. They they said, yes, we could do that with uh where you guys kind of in effect purchase it from us. Um, put that money into the account or the fund where it was paid for out of. We came up with thirty five hundred. Uh, Mr. Hannaford's research and Mr. Donegan also agreed that that was fair. And so that's where it's not. It's it's not necessarily a purchase legally because technically you have a title to it already. It's just transferring the asset to that department and reimbursing the R A A.
We're gonna plan on putting it on Gov dot deals or.
No, you guys are getting it. Maintenance wanted it. We put, we were going to put it on Gov dot deals.
Yeah.
And then maintenance wanted it. Uh, but because we paid for it. Yeah, so we paid for it out of R A A money. So because of that, we had to do it in this way where you guys were in person.
I'll have to transfer Mount coin or into that one. Uh, yes.
Arrow gets a car. All right. Okay, eight. We didn't have anybody from Frederick here. How big were the? Um, to adopt resolution preparing month of November. It's National Adoption Month in November twenty one, twenty twenty five is Adoption Day, Troma County, Ohio. Uh, this year's theme is National Adoption Month. Some people are worth melting for. And the Board of County Commissioners recognizes efforts of Prairie Court Judge Frederica. Troma County Children's Services in finding uh loving permanent fam- families for all children. Um, I believe I'm gonna attend this. This is, I believe I'm gonna attend this commissioners, so you know. Uh, nine. What's this? This is an enterprise zone.
Nick Hoggins, from going to mission. Uh, this is an enterprise of agreement for Kimberly Clark Corporation. Um, this is for a potential expansion of their site. Uh, they're still working on building their first structure there. Uh, but they are looking to receive a six percent abatement for ten years on a proposed uh distribution center. Approximately five hundred and ninety one thousand six feet. Um, so they're they're looking to put a regional distribution center there. This is still a potential. Uh, as we went through before, they're trying to get their um incentives and any other uh financial packages in order so they can bring it to their corporate. Was to approve the project moving forward. Allen Township approved this last Wednesday at their regular meeting. Um, and we do have a public hearing scheduled for this tomorrow at ten AM. Uh, so this is uh again, just a an enterprise zone that Allen Township's already approved. Uh, for the potential of a phase two for the Kimberly Park. Um, in the form of regional distribution center.
Right, and commissioners, um. I believe that this will employ an additional seventy.
Sixty five.
Sixty.
Probably sixty five people.
This'll. This is a an additional employment number of sixty five for this distribution, which, um, you know, we did. Give a sixty percent on their initial project. Um, I don't see any issue. Well. And they moved this up, the timeframe, they moved this up from when they're originally wanted to do this, correct?
For so, yes, um, there is a, you know, they they have potentials of expansion throughout North America. Um. Myself, Lake River and several other economic development partners are are trying to make sure. Uh, but this was a potential to be built in in a couple of locations that was planned out. Four or five years down the road. Um, they've expedited this process. Um. And hopefully we can get all the financials in word, make sure that it becomes a reality here in trouble county.
The commissioners, I think you call at our meeting that they were discussing with the commissioners, the fact that this uh wasn't gonna end just at their. Uh, facility that there would be possibility for distribution and additional uh structures on that property, which we are anticipating that they own a lot of. Land there. So it I think we could anticipate that there would be some additional um. Outbuildings on that property. So we probably will be seeing maybe additional um asks. From Kimberly Park, which will be a major economic driver and employment opportunity.
Well, they've got the property there and as they did at the beginning. This is phase two and there's talks of phase three, phase four already. You know, I had to get the cart before the horse, but this is all part of the process of let them grow.
Oh, yeah. Commissioners, and they're doing it faster than what they originally anticipate.
Mm hmm. And it's because of things like this, I think, that are paving the way for the economic development. So we have to do our due diligence. And we have to do our responsibility to pave that way to welcome them.
I do want to point out phase two is still a potential. They are trying to get their uh everything in order for their board. And the discussions with potential of other future expansions, those could land anywhere in any of their North American facilities. We are gonna work hard to make sure that we try to attract them here, but that is all up in the air as of right now. So. That is just future potential, something that we look for.
Understood. Okay, thank you, Nick. Um, Mr. Hickey's not here.
He was coming all the time.
Okay.
This is just very simple. They just, they were missing a couple of items along with spout or actually.
So the, this is the purchase of Pep Link Max HD four MVX five G, whatever that is.
That that was on our, we already approved it. This is an amendment to include the additional or upgraded antennas and cables.
Okay.
To make.
It's only additional thirteen hundred bucks.
Okay, so we have no problem.
Yeah.
Okay, um. Eleven, uh. Prove or deny the closed vacation of Overbrook Avenue. Uh, with Summit Street and Cedar Park, a lot of located Liberty, Liberty Township. And that held on November twelfth. Twelve. These we have here. This is. Ran a petition for annexation one hundred twenty two point six three two acres of land by Gear Mart Properties. Uh, submitted uh by the agent for the petitioner on October fifteenth for lands in Weathersfield Township. And contiguous to the city of Niles. Ohio, based on the submitted certified copy of the pre-annexation agreement. Entered into into between the city of Niles attached Weathersfield and Gear Mart Properties. Date in September twenty three, all in accordance with O R C seven oh nine oh two two. For a type one annexation and to authorize the clerk submitted copy. Proceedings here in the clerk of the Niles Council. And the fiscal officer, Weathersfield Township, uh Thomas Nader, agent for the petitioner. Of the auditor of the Troma County, Ohio. We spoke about this. Um.
All the criteria has been met for this.
Everything's been met.
Yes.
And Niles.
Yes.
Is an agreement.
Yes, it was still checked by um Turn Burton.
Okay, Weathersfield's good, Niles is good. Okay. Thank you. Okay, Gary did the thirteen and fourteen. Fifteen. Build position. Now value facilities.
Fifteen's mine.
Okay.
This is actually um. A work order system to uh fade out our facility, dude, work, work order system. Um, however, I need to put this on hold. There were some things in the uh, in the agreement that prosecutor's office wanted to have looked at and changed. So at this time, we probably just can't put it on hold.
So just remove it from the Jennifer Marley.
Well, I'll just hold it. Maybe the local office too, so.
Okay. Thank you, Darren. Gary New Brown, sanitary?
Yes, Commissioner, item sixteen. This is a Gary New Brown sanitary engineer. Uh, Commissioner's item sixteen is our annual request for qualifications for consultant engineers. That's basically gets us a complete set of their qualification statements on bio for the year. Uh, this way as projects uh are advertised throughout the course of the year, they don't have to keep reproducing this set of. Uh, qualification statements and sending it to this every project. They send out a blanket one and then if they're interested in the project, that does come time. Uh, when we advertise it, they just send in a letter of interest and they say, yes, we're interested in uh. Biding the services for that project and you can refer to our uh qualification statements. This is something we've been doing every year now for two years. Uh, item seventeen, uh seventeen, eighteen. Nineteen, twenty, twenty one. Uh nineteen and twenty. These are all requests for qualifications for our next later projects. That we are going to undertake. Uh. Item seventeen is this for that Still Wagon Road, Still Wagon Red Water Project. Commissioner, if you were to public jury for this. We need someone to uh come in and combine the Anderson Morse Project, Still Wagon Project. And now we need some extra design work up there on Dallas by interroad. This is gonna be now a system and they want to loop the entire system up through there. So we need a consultant come in. Put together the drawings for one project there. So that's what we're asking for here to go out for request. Uh, the second one is the Williams Drives, well, water room as project of that township. Waiting to complete the Elm Road project or moving on this one. And this is a rather large project. I think I look at it well over two hundred connections up here. Uh, so uh Elm Road project opened it up for water to be extended here on Williams Drive. We need to get the design in during the way. The anyway, it's a request for qualification. Uh, anyway, it's a request for qualifications for engineering for that waterfront. I go into item nineteen. Uh, or Vienna Package Plans. It's back behind the Swat Creek Country. What's the name of that road going back into that neighborhood? Just south of eighty-two.
Yeah.
Just south of eighty-two. Uh, back into that.
Development.
Yeah, that development there is a package plan back behind that. Now that we have the interceptor built on State Route one ninety-three. What we wanna do is that package plant that is back there and take that offline, replace it with a pump station. And run a force may not to one ninety-three. That package plant is to burn overhaul. It's gonna cost well over a million dollars on all that package plan. We're just gonna solve that problem up in a pump station. Uh, we got the same situation here with item twenty. Our B and K package plant over in Orange Township. This is probably, I wanna say, about five thousand feet. That package plant sits about five thousand feet from where we are putting in those lines over there as part of the Patrick and Gilbert Project. Same situation here. This will do for an overhaul also. Instead of let's re, going in and replacing this package. This little pump station, force may send it out to. The new sewer we're built on here in Meadowbrook area. All right, on item twenty-one, uh, Perkins Jones Road, uh, we have substantial completion. We passed the, made through all the air tests, pressure tests, uh, everything that their water type. It's ready for connections and this is the next step is to issue a substantial completion. Uh, you go ahead and send letters out to all the residents giving the, giving them the procedures on how to get connected.
Okay. Um, back to the package plant, is that twenty?
Yes.
Where, where are we going? Are you going to do a similar thing to Squaw Creek or is that? How old is this unit?
Uh, item nineteen is for the one in Vienna. That's the one back beyond.
Right.
That's nineteen. Number twenty is B and K Package Plant, that's the one over here on Warren Town.
Okay.
And both are very, very similar. Place in the, the package.
So you're gonna tie in like you're saying?
Yes.
I just wanted to be clear about that. And where are the funds coming from?
Uh, on each of these, this is where our R I F fund comes into play, replacement improvement fund. That's actually a savings force on both of these, not having to go out and rehab either one of these. And the other thing is it's the reporting requirements. Uh, that takes up a lot of operator time going out there doing these, uh, daily and monthly reports and. Samples and making sure that we're not releasing any bad effluent in, in, out of the streams. You know, all that monitoring is taken away. It's, it's sent into the main interceptors. Treatment plants and this is just a, we win. Uh, when these package plants were built, these sewers were not in close proximity to them. That's why. These were sort of isolated out in middle areas that were too far away from any main line sewer. Now that, uh, with all the construction we've done throughout the last twenty years or so. We've got, uh. Black and silver close enough to these that we can just put it on. We already did this on our, our Logan Way. We had one down in Liberty called our Logan Way Package Plant. We've already taken that one offline. What is it, uh?
It would make sense. Rather than have to spend a million dollars to upgrade a package plant. Okay. Uh, Tracy?
I, I don't remember twenty-two, uh, Bob Meyer and I were the same for engineers. Uh, this is for personnel action. He's Michael Bradley. He's going to be our assistant wastewater superintendent. At our mosquito plant. Um, he actually used to work for us for a couple of years, uh, from two thousand nine to two thousand twelve. And he even started since then.
Tracy?
Number twenty-three is to Casey McDonough, nine one one director. Is to accept the recommendation of architect groups mechanic and incident consultant Jason Rowland. And enter the negotiations for lease space with the Troma County Health Department. Helped for this information of the property reviews that were submitted during the RFP phase of the nine one one dispatch relocation location project. Um, basically, as you guys know, the update, uh, we had four. Proposals for the RFP response. One of them was, um, removed because it didn't meet the criteria of the RFP. The other three, um, if. Sultan and the architect looked at those spaces, did a review. I'm not sure. I believe you guys got these one. Yeah, anyway, if you didn't. This is the documentation from both first mechanic and Jason from MCM Consultants. Um, articulating the reasons behind what the recommendation is. Their recommendation is to proceed with the, uh, one ninety-four Main Street. In Cortland, the health department location, uh, based on all those findings. Um, they said that's gonna be the most cost-effective location. So basically, it's now up to you guys to see if we can kind of get this project back on track as far as. Moving forward with the structural engineering testing that we would need to do to get us to that final number of what it's gonna cost to actually move in there. Um. We, I took this to the nine one one board. The members that were in attendance. Agreed, uh, with the recommendations and they wanted me to propose it to you guys to go forward with this project.
We, we already did some, um. Some of the study on that building, did we not?
We have.
Stapled it with the bid process.
Yes.
Proposals.
We have a feasibility study. Um, where we had left off was they wanted to do the structural engineering test because there's different, there's, there's wood, there's masonry, there's other type of. Product in there. They would go in with the architect, do structural engineering, which we have budgeted for already with part of the feasibility pro- project. Um, what they would do is go in and complete those and then they could get back to you and say, this is our hard number of what it would take to move us into that building. Um, so. Because of having to go out to bid in the RFP for the lease space and how that all worked out. We kind of pushed pause on the project and, and got that completed. This is now the recommendation saying, yes, the consultants and architects believe that is the best location for us to move into. Due to the cost, size, space, all those things, um. And the renovation needs that would be, you know, need to take place. Um, so where we are now is, you know, it's, it's kind of the ball's in your court to decide if, yes, we can move to the health department and continue negotiations with them. To move forward with that lease space and get the ball back kind of rolling as far as the projects, as far as figuring out that dollar.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to. Just, I'd like to make, remove the word lease in there and leave, leave all negotiations open with that. We already passed one hurdle. We looked at the lease part of it, um, but. If, if we just remove that word, it, it allows our prosecutor. And us to start talking about options of moving into that place. Cause it's been talked about, how much do we take? How much do we not take? Who handles maintenance? If we just remove the word lease at this time. It still allows us to go forward and put everything on the table. What's the best deal for Troma County? Um, with that going.
I understand it and, um, I don't disagree with it, um. Just to let the commissioners know, I think. Depend, or no matter what other options, we're still gonna need to do, I was thinking about, we're still gonna need to do. The feasibility study, correct? Depending on what other options we have. So I, I think this was in part of discussion that. You know, there were some other options. With the building, so. The feasibility study would still need to be done with those options, all the options that we have, right? So taking the lease off would enable us to.
It just opens up negotiations broader.
Right. Okay.
And, and I agree with that.
Yeah.
I would just like for us to be a part of that.
Right.
Okay, yeah, sooner the better.
Okay, so we'll reach out to the House Board and, uh, with our prosecutor and.
Right.
And we, we started in that direction now that we've cleared. Different hurdles, medical.
Remove the word lease. And then we will. All in agreement with moving forward with the feasibility.
Yeah, okay. One big question if I may, um, I just wanna make sure I'm clear. I have permission to move forward with the structural. Analysis portion of this. Number, after, obviously, okay.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you guys very much. Appreciate it.
All right, Tracy. Thank you. Now. Um. Alex, or? What are you doing over there?
Um, I'm here for the health insurance, but there is a number twenty for me that I. Don't necessarily listen to. It's not mine, sorry.
Sheriff's here.
I'm taking.
But he's here. Oh, do you wanna take it?
I, I, yes, I've already.
Okay, Sheriff. I'm confusing Sheriff. With Sheriff up. Sheriff, go ahead, Sheriff.
Sheriff Taylor, Commissioner's Office. Um, number twenty-four is we had a, a vehicle that was totaled, a police vehicle to be exact. Um, we did in return. Get fourteen thousand five hundred fifty-six dollars and ninety cents back. From the insurance after the deductible. Um, the sheriff's office actually. They found a twenty twenty-four with statewide. It's brand new. It's a leftover. And they have agreed to hold it for us until tomorrow, so I'm hoping you pass this. But the cost of the vehicle was forty-six thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And then all of the equipment from the wrecked one will be able to be put onto this twenty-four. It actually will fit. So that will be five thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars. So the total cost is fifty-one thousand six hundred eighty-three dollars. And ultimately, we're, we're coming up with thirty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars and ten cents to replace that wreck.
Makes sense.
It, everything is just, it's, it's come together. It's, um, Chief McDorman did a very good job on, on getting this situated.
Needs to be replaced and.
Yes.
We get a new unit.
And since I'm on the sheriff's office. Uh, I do have something that I would like to get put on the agenda for tomorrow. Commissioners, these are the, the packages of information. When you say that chores. In reference to what, um. Captain Alberdi has. Tried to get the information on, this will help them. And it's opioid funds in obtaining a new, uh, currency counter. This one, um. Actually will align with national. They will run the serial numbers. And from my understanding, I'm definitely not an expert in this. It will actually. Figure out if this cash came from here, if it originated here, then we have the option of. Getting this forfeited to us, to the sheriff's office. So it's. It's a nice system for the cost, the total cost, that's including a new laptop to run the system. It's six thousand eight hundred nine dollars and forty-nine cents. So I'm asking if we could put this on the agenda for tomorrow.
It's. Currently. How do we do that anyways? I mean, do, don't we? We.
They have.
Weren't able to keep.
Yeah, it's, it, at times, but if we find out that, say, someone, yeah, from my understanding. There again, um, if you have questions, I suggest you, you talk to Captain Alberi. But from my understanding, if they catch someone in, say, New York. They run the serial numbers and it comes back that originated here, we get those funds.
Good.
So. It, it will help. It's already, this is a part of the abatement strategy, category three recovery, three B, three B. Um, April has. Formated that with Captain Alberi, so everything's in line.
I mean, it's not a big ask. I just, I was wondering if, you know, if it. If it pays for itself. Sheriff, you're here. I don't, I don't know if you have anything to add to it.
It's a money counter that. System tracks the serial numbers, so we know what by money was put out and it's all registered nationally, so. We'll be able to. See if we collect funds forfeit where they can. And we actually put money out and helps for block case investigations too.
Does it, it, it probably speeds up the process too? Is it, I mean, or does that have anything to do with?
The investigation.
Okay.
Sure. Doesn't beat up the work process for. Keeps records of the bills.
It's not a big ask. I mean, I, I don't. Have an issue. It's opioid.
Yes.
And but, and just to amplify that a bit, we should be getting our first. Settlement payment. On the last opioid settlement soon. They signed all those documents.
Okay.
So that should be coming in. And then in the second quarter of next year, we get our second settlement. Name.
And they said it was October we were gonna get it, last month?
Well, we had documents that had to be signed and there was a little bit of a lag because. There was a discrepancy on. I don't know what happened with that. Did that come to you, Lisa? The opioid with Galucci?
Yes.
And we had to get them some. Other information and stuff, so. But that'll be coming soon.
It should be, yes.
Yeah. But I think before the end of the year, we're gonna get that in. Might be a month or two late.
And that's for how much?
One point two five and then the additional one point two five. Thank you, Sheriff.
But this money is gonna come out of the building.
Yes, what, what is in the account? Uh, yes. So if you allow me to add it to the agenda. Can we have, we add the language to, to just have. Yes.
Okay. Okay. Alex?
Commissioner Alex, you've done the brush, your research experiment, I'm just here to see if the license is for. We, we table the agenda items from last week. If you have any additional questions, I can interview with. Packages of information.
Mm-hmm.
If there's any questions.
Last week, we didn't have any, yeah, we didn't have any other than, uh. When you're, you were absent, so. Um, it was tabled. Uh, you know, you have any questions?
Yeah, just. Eighteen, nineteen, twenty, are they back on here again to read? Or they?
Twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
So that's what they become, eighteen, nineteen, twenty become?
Then nothing was changed from.
I have no problem with that there.
Okay. And then, but that goes all the way through to. The eight.
So we're moving to twenty-five, then twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight or what? Guess that's the.
Alex, you wanna? Explain twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty to the commissioner? Well, you had a question.
Yeah, I wasn't here for it last week, so you guys.
That's the same thing.
What do I need to? I read them before the question.
Well, the cost of coverage.
Right, as well, but I did give you a lot to. If any questions about.
You did like, like before, you went with the other insurance companies and went over the rates, rate shop and. It was like the best rates we came up with.
Medical Mutual declines to bid on our package whatsoever.
Right.
Bid on any of our plans, um, they said it's completely out of, again. Not gonna go into what they said, abate them, but they declined to bid. Um, the next one is Anthem.
As it did last year too, right?
Correct. Anthem across the shield would be significantly higher. So those are our two options. That's the only people who bid, United Healthcare, Anthem, Medical Mutual. Medical Mutual won't even bid, Anthem is higher, United Healthcare is the lowest and best.
And this is the same broker we always use or do we have multiple brokers, they said?
One broker.
Are they all the same?
What do you?
Like. Or other brokers that do medical mutual the same as what we have or?
No, so you, you would enter into an agreement with the broker, um, and the broker will go out and bid with whoever they feel like can actually. Enter.
Your broker.
Rossi, so EJ Rossi Company.
We've had for a while.
Um, oh boy. In twenty plus years.
I sent him to me this last year, that's what I remember. So he was, you're the same. Format.
They are the lowest and best and I can. Ensuring that. I've had other people reach out to me. I reply back to them. Any of the commissioners, they're sending emails or this person called. I reach out to them. I give them what their rate is. I give them all the information and they literally respond back, thanks, but no thanks. So.
Cobra rates, what's the percentage change?
Uh, that was provided, it's ten point seven. That was provided during the budget hearings as well. So we are going, it's a ten point seven percent change.
Cobra and regular.
That's correct.
I saw something, I read a thing online after I read the emails the other day. That sixteen to eighteen percent was like a national average that I was looking at.
So commissioners, I did provide you some additional information today just for you to have, uh, in your wheelhouse. Uh, this is Columbus where Ash Springs and County is actually committed, um. Just some percentage increases that you can see here. So while the nationwide average was six to nine percent, Ohio is significantly higher. This'll detail that out for you. Again, it will be everything that we already discussed. The reasons that are triggering to that is espe- is especially weight loss drugs and innovative cancer treatments, um. Right now they're pricey, so hopefully as those things evolve, the prices will go down. And then, of course, the chronic disease is the largest factor. With that being said. I found this very interesting, um, Frankl County employees are seeing an overall increase of eight percent. Though the county knows that due to sound physical management, they've been able to shield workers from the thirteen percent cost increase anticipated. Commissioners, I remind you, we're at ten point seven and ten point six five. Again. Each county is going to be different and. each county is going to be different, and it is based off your claims, your actual claims paid. So I can't account for that. Um, health insurance costs for workers with employee sponsored, employer sponsored plans are expected to rise significantly in twenty twenty-six. The projected rate spike would be the highest since twenty-ten, outpacing wage growth inflation. Several central Ohio employees, employers, including Ohio State University and Franklin County, are already seeing rate increases for twenty twenty-six. So I just wanted to show you anything that we are not atypical in this health insurance conundrum.
Do we know what the Asheville boards are running around us?
So there, some are self, and self-funded, some are not self-funded, so unfortunately, you don't wanna compare yourselves to self-funded entities. Uh, when you're fully funded, you have no leverage, so to speak, it is what it is. We're self-funded, we have some leverage, and what that means is we've signed our own plans, which are what we talked about. Plans will be looked to be changed once they're out, they're out of all the contracts, and two more that they're still in. There's not much I can do about that.
In Franklin County, it says they shield their workers from the thirteen percent increase, they probably use reserve money and rainy day funds for something like that, maybe?
I have no way of being able to tell you that, sorry.
Well, that'd come from somewhere. But they expect thirteen, they got eight, they said sound fiscal management did it, had to be, had to kick in something.
And that is an option, I, I mean, don't really wanna go there, the contracts call for eighty-eight twelve, that's what we negotiated, that's the contract support commissioners signed up on. Um, so this is simply twelve percent of the, of the hundred percent of the premiums.
So when the premium comes in, if we, we look at the contract, and that tells us what, what the amount should be, and
Yeah.
These are those amounts, not any more, not any less.
So if I try to go more, that's an unfair labor practice, if I go less, it's also considered an unfair labor practice, so unless, if we go less than twelve percent, we negotiated at the twelve percent, that was the marching orders given at that time. Again, with that being said, even if we go less, I'd still have to go to every single meeting and say, would you sign off on an amendment to go less, which then opens the door to potential them saying, well, why can't we go lower? We're not renegotiating, so then we already negotiated, unless the board chooses to, that's your choice. And then I will tell you, if we don't recruit the full twelve percent, we will go back to where we were, uh, previous to last year, so we will be dipping into the reserves to fund insurance for our.
Well, last year, we kinda caught up to not do that, cause we were, there were some unions that were
For the first time.
paying way less than what they should have, and we were taking the brunt of that. So all we did is we got to baseline last year, I remember, which sucked to do that.
And we're still.
Sucks to do it again.
We're still not at baseline, Commissioner, we're close, but we're not where I, where we were when. Yeah. We depleted the hospital trust fund rather quickly.
We anticipate to, in the future, uh, the administration current on the national level is working on
We hope.
prescriptions.
Yeah.
If that happens, we may end up.
That's the hope.
Maybe, but.
And then I will say.
As they ever go down, but.
For twenty twenty-seven, we're hoping that we can change the plans.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be the same coverage everybody is used to, but we can get those premiums down, but you will be paying more out of pocket, you will be paying higher deductible.
This does lock it in for you no matter what, right? Cause I watched, I don't know if you watched, I think it was Sixty Minutes Sunday, and they were talking about not, I know, it was one of the other Sunday morning shows, that you had Obamacare, and then went into something else, and then they extended it, and expires the December of twenty-five right now. So they said that we could see dramatic insurance increases across the board if the Trump administration doesn't renew it again, or kick the can down for it again.
For the Affordable Care Act, so it would have no bearing necessarily on us, because we are self-funded.
That's what I'm saying, so we're locked in at this, so even if that changes, rates go up on that for individuals, our employees are still protected from paying that more.
And, and we're locked in at a rate, and they're locked in at a rate, so if our, if ours go premiums goes up, do theirs go up, or are they still paying it at last year's rate?
So they're locked in whatever you agree to here for the entire year, so it'd be twelve percent of the twenty twenty-six anticipated premium, so we've accounted for all those increases already, that is what the cost is right now.
So actually, they, they will see an increase.
This is the.
So that's built in.
Yeah.
That's what I mean, so they're protected, it goes higher, this may look like a big number now.
Their number's not gonna go any higher than this.
And we're protected too.
Correct.
Both ways. So we don't fall behind like it did for five years or ten years down the road.
And commissioners, again, I mean, I won't let that happen, but if you guys wanna relook at it different ways, no problem, we'll look at it, um, but I will tell you, the reserves got very scarcely low. And we have to be actuarially sound, and that is important, because we are self-funded, if we lose that actuary report and that number two point eight is what I need to do, we go below that, we lose self-funding potentially, we will go back to fully funded, which, to your point, will go to the higher, I mean, we won't see anything like it, we will not have these plans, we have no control.
And we do have.
Why would somebody want, wanna not be self-funded if it's gonna cost?
Self-funded costs a lot of money, so for every claim, that's a great question, Commissioner, there's pros and cons, the biggest, I think, the biggest con is that we're on the line dollar for dollar for any significant or catastrophic claims. So let me give you a prime example, we buy what's called a stock loss. Uh, we pay a significant premium for that for a year, believe it or not, we're roughly having to look at another one point four percent, one point four million to spend on a stock loss for a specific claim that is catastrophic, and I mean, the insurance company has come to us and said, we're lasering this, we won't pay your stock loss on this anymore, you're paying for every dollar over two hundred fifty thousand dollar claim. So we're paying actually every single claim, that's why these numbers are still high, that's the truth. But we can control our plans, we can control our pharmacy's time, so we can say, this drug is allowed, this drug is not allowed. If you go to a fully funded insurance, you don't have those options, they say, this is your option, these are your plans, and this is what you're getting, and this is what you're paying, by the way, so we have a little bit more leverage, I think what I would consider a lot more leverage, um, personally, but that's just my perspective. We also get to pick our providers, even the death element in the vision, you can't do that when you're fully funded, you get the package that you get, so.
So the only way that we can look at it simply, if we have to be comfortable.
Hmm, which helped the deduct.
It has to be two things, it ha- we would have to, yeah, so we've already looked at it, and I talked to the unions about it, we're, we know what's gonna have to happen. Um, so the first thing that we would wanna is obviously adjust the deductible as well as the out-of-pocket, so, uh, that's gonna be a double, uh, but what you will see is.
Uh, if, if we did that, did we see significant savings?
Absolutely, because our plans, there's a, a chart that I attached in the back, our employees pay next to nothing. Next to nothing, which means the employer is paying. So for example, in-network is a hundred dollars deductible, two hundred, the high, even out of network, the highest anybody is paying for an out-of-pocket is eighteen hundred and three thousand, like with zero. So they're paying next to nothing. So what that sounds, what that says is, is that guess who's paying for that as a self-funded?
So my question is then, would you come back in with a recommendation for us?
Yes.
On changing this?
But it will be twenty twenty-seven, so it'll be for plan year twenty twenty-seven.
Is the other question too, and the other thing, and I think, um, Alex, you had mentioned, I don't know if they're working on this, but when you have a family plan, you have a family of five, but when you have a family plan and a husband and a wife, it's significantly different than if you have the children. Are they working on tweaking that? But.
So that's what we're planning to roll out for twenty twenty-seven, like I said, we're looking at not just the tiers, but revamping the plans, we're looking at revamping everything.
Yeah.
But I can only do that, I have to stress this, once it's out of the contracts, it's still in the nine-one-one contract, it's still in the auditor's contract, it is, that's it, those two, once we get through those, it's an open world, we can change the tiers, so I'm looking to do a single, single plus one, and then a, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then also, we're gonna introduce higher deductible plans and higher out-of-pockets, and we'll see how we can get that to affect our plans, hopefully in a good way.
You could do it like they do with car insurance, you know, listen, you want this higher deductible, you want, now, you want the, you want this better plan? Then that's what it costs you.
Now, I will be honest with you, we've also discussed rolling it out like a hybrid, so keeping some of the plans, so that way we're not hurting anybody, or, or they don't feel like it's hurt. However, if those people don't switch to the newer, higher deductible plans, we're not saving anyone. So that's one thing you have to think about, if we keep these, kind of, we'll call them very, uh, robust plans, and employees don't move from plan A, B, or C over to, we're still paying the same amount. So we really have to look at this as, unfortunately, all or nothing.
We, uh.
Yeah, so, so my question is, if, if you offer me a plan where my deductible is higher, it'd be cheaper for me.
Yes.
That's expensive, and then that employee that doesn't choose that, then would it be feasible that they pay more?
Yeah. Yeah.
Is that allowable?
I mean, I think you could have a plan like that, right?
It's, so they would pay twelve percent of the premium, but you are correct, Commissioner, the premium for that higher plan would be higher, that is correct, they're all gonna pay twelve percent across the board, cause that is what the, you know, agreements say in the contracts. However, to your point, they'll pay twelve percent of a higher premium versus twelve percent of a lower premium. Now, what that does do though, too, to, in full transparency, cause I'm never looking to hurt anybody, especially when, you know, they're going to a hospital and need something. What those higher deductibles and out-of-pockets will do is, they will pay less of the premium upfront. However, what they are not used to is when they go and have a service, that bill's gonna pay, or they're gonna have to pay, when they weren't used to paying that, okay, even the copays, I mean.
What question, and, and I think you, you've explained it very well, and I appreciate that. Um, how much more do you think it's gonna cost us in twenty twenty-six and then twenty-five?
Um.
Just roughly, just give me a ballpark.
The anticipator put a twenty-four million.
How much?
Twenty-four million.
And how much were they?
Right now, we're at twenty-two point five.
It's working on two million dollars.
Yes. And that is would be a one point four increase that I'm gonna have to pay out of the hospital trust fund, for the special stock loss aggregate due to one specific catastrophic claim.
So that's why we really need to take a hard look at it.
If we hadn't, commissioners, and I'm not just saying this to say this, I mean, the fact that we got this accomplished through contract negotiations is because I worked so diligently to show that we were in the market, and we were not able to meet. So what we, what I would have had to come to as a board, is I would have had to come to the board and say, the general fund alone has to subsidize up to twenty-four million dollars in claims. With a bankrupted account. And I'm not saying it's over yet, but we're getting, what I'm seeing is, is that it's paying off, we are back, our reserves are back up, not to where they should be, but they're up slightly. But again, commissioners, any catastrophic claim is a huge risk, and I can't come back.
Do we offer, or could we offer incentives for them to not take insurance, to go on their husband's insurance, to give them a stipend instead of absorbing a thousand, a twelve hundred dollars a month, give them a three hundred dollar stipend a month if you don't take insurance?
So commissioners, I'll use myself as an example, some of our contracts already have that, so JFS four fifty-eight, it's an absentee contract. Uh, when I was a bargaining employee over there, which I was for almost four and a half, five years, I think, um, I took a stipend uh, that was in the contract, I got a hundred and fifty dollars a month to not be on the count of insurance, because my spouse had insurance. Um, that is not in every contract, but that is in JFS four fifty-eight, that's in the OPBA contracts, all of them, the sheriff's departments, so if their spouse has insurance, we can't force them, but if they choose to, they can, you have their spouse going on insurance, and they take the stipend. Uh, so that is something that we have been working on doing for, you know, however, that doesn't work for non-bargaining, so it's only a benefit extended to bargaining employees, not non-bargaining.
Why not?
You can make that resolution if you'd like.
I mean, if, if it saves us money, why? There's some people that make good money, the top, upper people, that have the insurance, they have, well, it's an extra insurance just in case, you know.
Come with that is, you could only make that for the commissioners, I hate to do this, but like, you can't enforce that on the other elected officials, if they choose, so it, it would save us like sitting here, you, you, you know, us collectively, but that would have to be something the other elected officials buy into, if, if, for example, if prosecutor says, sure, all, you know, that's part of their budget, that one fifty stipend, which is way less than the thirty, whatever hundred they account for, three thousand a month for other insurance. But, um, that is, if the board of commissioners wants to do that, by all means.
Do we get a discount because of the number of employees, say we lost, say we shed foreign employees off insurance, is that gonna raise the rate higher for everybody else?
It's the claims that drive the rate, so.
Okay.
It depends.
It'll be less claims.
So here, well, it could work, yeah, there's, um.
And can we not offer that, or vision and hearing if they didn't want?
So you can do à la carte, so, uh, I'm sorry, we went over this, I apologize last week, so plan A and plan B can be à la carte. So, I'm sorry, plan B and plan C, so what that means is you can pick and choose, if you have medical, you can just pay for the vision, you can just get it for the general. Plan A is the flat rate, you have to take the entire, uh, plan.
Yep.
Now, one thing, uh, Commissioner, and as I just wanna make sure to be, uh, you made about, very valid point about the single, single plus one, and the family. That also is taking me into account that this family has high claims, you may have a single plus one who have no claims. You may have a single plus one who are driving the high amount of claims, and really, the family is very healthy and just do preventative care.
True.
So you do not know which way, unless you look at, and I, I hate to do this, but unless you look at all seventeen hundred claims that we look at, that I, we look at, it's very hard to determine who is in what's driving these factors.
Yeah.
And I, I know the unions are gonna drive for the best protection they can get for their employees, but there's a lot of lower level employees, pay-wise, but this increase does hit them the hardest, and maybe some of them would be okay with a thousand dollar deductible, with higher deductible, just for a kind of catastrophic event, but they need that pay in their paycheck, they all, it may not affect us, but, you know, eleven bucks out of pay, or fourteen, or thirty bucks, or forty bucks out of someone's pay, could affect that family unit uh, in a lot of ways, and I think we should offer options like that down the road that, let them make the choice. They need it now, and it's a difference for us, do we pay the employee more, so they can afford the insurance we're giving them? Or do we give, or do we pay more into the insurance thing, so they get better insurance, and a cheaper rate is the trade-off of what we're looking at here?
Yeah, you know, I, I think the bottom line is everybody has to realize that cost of hospitalization, and, and we just have to take, employees need to take a hard look at, we need to take a hard look at, look at it, and we all need to do whatever we can to keep these costs down, because at some point in time, we just can't.
This is our advantage in a lot of ways, so, the reason we get some county employees is for the benefits, for the benefits, they're not working for the, they can work, they can make seventeen bucks now, or like nine of the workers, workers can make twenty-five bucks now in a lot of places, but not with benefits that are as good as this, and as people get older, I think they realize that, and county benefits is kinda like the the enticement, the whole negative is enticing people to come to the county and work, and stay with the county and work. Um, so we don't wanna sacrifice the quality of what we have in healthcare, you know, we don't wanna diminish that, because that is what keeps people here. Give them options.
Give them the option, don't sacrifice the care, but give them the option, you know, and the younger families, I think would probably partake in the higher deductibles, cause they're not visiting
They might.
the doctors and, you know, as much, depending on the children, cause children are, you know, that's a difference, so, well.
Commissioners, I just wanted to let, leave you with, we're not done yet, uh, this was just the beginning, the beginning was to get the plans out of the contracts, like I said, those plans that you're looking at right now were embedded in the contract, there was nothing I could shop differently, like I said, we're down to two. One is in contract negotiations right now, the last one will be in twenty twenty-six, so this is our year to get the plans out and go out, and let's relook at this as a whole, so that was step, phase one of what we're, what I've been trying to do since I came up with.
Can we start with those two unions now?
Um, so this is for twenty twenty-six, so if, there's, unless you want, so I'm trying to say, we're way past the time, not past, but we're we need to get open and rolling now, um.
Yeah, I think it's too late now, what you're saying, that's, yeah, we need to get moving on this, and then if, maybe in your ways negotiations, maybe you could put in a clause, and we can reopen that just for this, just for healthcare.
But I do just wanna make the board aware, this isn't over, we fought hard to, at least last year, we were at a fourteen percent increase, which again, was in line with everything that you've seen here, the numbers that I provided you, we fought really hard to get to where we were this year, which is a ten point seven per single, ten point six by their family increase, and it is.
Well, I can tell you, last year, this was the suckiest vote that I ever had as a commissioner, is having to raise, you know, especially when you talk to custodians and people like that, that had to pay more out of their pay, and they're, I mean, they're barely getting by as it is. So I feel the pain, I'm sure there's a lot of JFS workers, there's a lot of, a lot of workers, it may not affect someone that makes eighty, ninety, a hundred thousand dollars a year, but it does affect someone that makes forty, and it sucked, and I hated to make that vote, I'm gonna hate to make this vote, but I, what are we gonna do? I mean, we can't leave them without insurance.
No.
And we really have no other options, we're, we're if there was a, a different parachute to pull here, I would gladly do that, I don't think there is one, but sure is.
Well, did you see the Cobra rate, once you leave government?
Right, it's horrible, I mean, big Cobra's.
And here is something that's.
Couldn't afford that.
Well, I am glad you brought that up, so that Cobra rate is what it would look like if you were to leave this job tomorrow. Also.
Twenty bucks a month, that would suck.
That is a negotiated rate that we get.
That's same, that's not.
That's single. In a family, yeah.
Yeah, if you're going to do, you got a sick kid or you got a pregnant wife, thirty-three hundred a month, but you don't, people won't make that in some of these jobs.
But commissioners, why I wanted to provide that to you is because that is the real number for these minutes, that is what we are paying, that is what the employer is paying. On behalf of everyone who wants to pay, that is the truth.
And that's based on our coverage, right?
You get what you pay for, and, and I know people don't want to hear that, I know that, but we've also been meeting with unions to figure out how to. Although it's not necessarily negotiable, it's not in their contract, if they get to, you know, dictate the plans going forward, I have had multiple. Uh, we've had two cost containment meetings, and we are working through one, and we have another one planned, we are working through. Trying to go at this together, that all possible, however. The broker has to see the table as to why, I mean, I'm very well aware it's not really negotiated, it's not negotiable, but we're willing to try to do whatever we can to reduce costs and reduce your out-of-pocket.
I, I would just ask for next year, I mean, we'll go through with this, absolutely look at a stipend to give employees that. Decline insurance, and then look at another higher deductible option that, that we can give them, and, and if you got a young kid. They got car insurance, like you said, they got to have it to be legal, and a driver around a. Four thousand dollar car, you know, i- i- they can have a higher deductible, if it need be, if it makes illegal, and that's all they can afford. Yeah, they'd like to have all the bells and whistles and stuff to go with it, but it does, we, it happens in everyday life, you got to take higher deductibles and. There's going to be some risk involved, if that's the money that you make, you got to live within your means.
And I did provide you an update of the cost containment meeting, and I did say that that is being something that's being discussed with for twenty twenty-seven. So we have a plan, we have a path that we're marching towards, um, hopefully it'll work out the way we all want it to work.
So when do you start negotiations then?
For twenty twenty-seven?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, so January first is the new plan, so we usually start, I usually start August, September, and then we work from there. Usually, sometimes July, just depends.
I would say stay on it as early as you can, let's start moving in that direction best we can, so we have maximum amount of time to do that, especially the stipend thing is. I think would be attractive to a lot of people, because I know a lot of this county employees. Their husbands work, and they work, and their wives work, and they work, and they just take it as they, they think it's insurance, let's just take it.
Sure, Taylor Commissioner's office, it did use to be in there, we did use to do that.
I was going to say, no, a long time ago, we did, yeah. And that's a negotiated benefit, yeah, you're right, I don't know why.
And they like, you know, so much gets covered, if it doesn't, it rolls over to my husband's insurance or whatever.
I can tell you right.
And I think they could do without that, if it meant getting more pay in their pocket.
Literally, when that, that was off the table, then employees said, why wouldn't I take it? Because I'm not getting anything for it anyway, so that's what happened.
No, it was not there in twenty-four ninety-three when I came on board, so I don't know when it went away.
And I don't, I don't recall the year, but it, it was, it's been a while.
That, because I will tell you, like, if I was, I have an entire contract, so I know it's there.
It was there.
Oh, and it would have to be, they'd have to have other insurance, because we don't want insurance. Employees to just give up insurance and roll the dice, and all of a sudden, we got a problem that they're not at work and they don't have insurance.
Commissioner, HR has the process, we have to verify the other, we, we go, we need marriage. Even during open enrollment, things that we do to verify these things for just one employee, I mean, I just spoke with one employee. Need marriage licenses, we need social security card, we need documentation, this is what we do every single day. So what we do is, we have a waiver firm, we have to, to protect us legally. If an employee is waiving insurance, we have to have them show us and provide us that they have other insurance available, A. And B, which was part of the Affordable Care Act, which has changed slightly, they used to get a penalty for it if they didn't have insurance. And B, we then have to verify that all the dependents are related to dependents, all the grandchildren, step, you know, all of that, grandchildren, stepchildren. Um, if they're parent or loco, I mean, we do all of that, that is what we do, so we make sure. Nobody's on this plan that shouldn't be on the plan, and vice versa, that everybody has the right coverage on the outside, if they don't have our coverage. And they sign a waiver, that they're waiving their health insurance for us.
Okay, thank you. Lot of, lot of information, thank you, Alex. I know that it's not easy work, that's for sure, hospitalization. We got Diane.
Morning, Diane Jacoby, Senior Lady Administration. Twenty-nine and thirty are positions that are available on the council, I have four positions that need to be filled. Two responses came in that are reappointments, it could be reappointments, and that would be Sam Lamancusa and. Uh, Anthony Tony La Priscina. Dominic Marquez, I believe stepping down, he's been on the board for a long time, but. Has applied, there's a position, I believe he's stepping back anyhow, so I need two more positions filled. We, packets were given to you October seventeenth or so, was this advertised?
I don't have a mind with me currently, but.
When was October?
October seventeenth is the due date.
Can we, can we reopen another due date and repost this?
No, we can do that.
I, I, I think they want to be fair, now that we know that there's some that are leaving, that don't want to come back, and then we have this other position, number thirty. I think we need to post it to find the best candidates we can get.
So you want me to hold off on thirty, but you're going to go ahead with item twenty-nine. To the, the reappointments, the two reappointments.
I don't think there's an issue there.
So we're going to point to.
Right, but then we need two more.
You don't need two more. Unless you want to reduce the amount. Of positions on that. Cancelled, because it's eleven, it's hard to keep it at eleven.
It is, but it's also hard to get them to attend, with this being senior citizens, many of them, we've had, you've had times where you didn't have a corps. And we need that eleven just to get there.
Okay, we'll reappoint also. But you're going to have the two positions to place as well.
Right, yeah, go for it, I'm, I'm totally fine with the two reappointments, and. Well, if Mr. Marquez is not, doesn't want to be reappointed, then it's two.
Totally, you might have the.
That's, that's completely a gem.
He might be the member with the longest number of terms, Dominic Marquez, I want to look back to see.
What's that?
Dominic Marquez may be the member who's had the longest number of terms.
So, um. Diane, so, how often do they need? Once a month?
Once a month, during just the regular, what I call the regular season, but once we get into bid cycle. Then they need as often as they need to, to reward those bids, so it's at least one or two of them.
I'm going to reach out to someone, I may have someone, I think.
Sam has been wonderful, having Sam on.
So we are going to have another two, we're in agreement with that?
And then post the, post the two, and let's give it a month or whatever, and redress this.
If they're interested in contacting you?
No, then.
They can email me or drop.
I, you don't know until I come to the meeting who you're going to appoint to, so.
When do the, when do the terms end, when someone's reappointing?
One is going to, for the three positions, the reappointments and one extra position. Um, it's through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight, so they're three-year terms. And then the one that's going to be just to fill someone's term that left, um, is ending next year.
Mr. La Priscino, when does his term end?
Usually three every year, one year there's.
Right, but I don't see an end to Mr. La Priscino.
These are all ending twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty.
Okay, they're all ending on that day?
So you're reappointing for three years.
Got you.
One other matter, if I can meet with at least one commissioner, I need to discuss the situation. You know, I have emailed Rick and I would request. Sometime today, tomorrow, I'm holding up on paying the stuff I want.
Meet with you after our meeting? Uh, we have another, no, tomorrow. Uh, you have somebody else coming in to meet, but, okay, are you going to be around? I'm not following you there.
I don't, we added it.
Morning, Dave Bobby, uh, jail administrator, sheriff's office, um, here today to ask for a. Approval for a one-year extension for our commissary contract. Clearly have a commissary contract with Chief, and, um, we're in one-year unlimited renewals. So the contract actually expired in October, so we're, we're, we're happy with the company, they've been a good partner. And there's no reason to go anywhere else, so we're asking for the one-year, um, renewal, so contract calls for unlimited one-year.
See any issue with that? Thank you, Major.
Thank you.
Nick, you left. Okay, so this, uh, commissioner is for you for the, uh.
Assistant, this is Zach, it's a, you know.
Zach Steiner, okay. Okay, and that's not an issue. And Sheriff, you're here, I don't know if you'd like to.
Yes, thank you. Sheriff Wilson from the gun sheriff's office. So we, uh, we're going through our budget numbers, and you know that we were short two million dollars this year compared to last. And there was money set aside for us, uh, we had an asset went up for seven hundred fifty thousand. Over, our, we worked those numbers, found that they used the last budget. Last projections of, of original budget, and we found that we only need three hundred thousand to get a shoot that a year. Without any actual use or something, we love to go on, or they want to overtime or any other thing that we may need. So we don't need the four hundred thousand, total five hundred thousand, that's set aside for us, just three hundred thousand. Or I'm going to cash your off.
We had, we had our family and set aside for it, we just got the police car, today was additional. Little bit, we're going to have to kick in, we're going to ask for three hundred thousand, I say, yeah, let's.
I have no issue whatsoever, but.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with my, my thing, but we have money in the general fund that we can take that out of and save the other money there.
Probably. I'll, I'll do it.
Either way, I mean, we had a good industry there, there was already earmarked for that, um, which we knew was coming on anyway. Yeah, whichever funds the easiest work, no problem with.
I'd do it for that.
And that, Mike, that's a great job, you only came in three hundred at the end of the year, we've had years in the past where it was millions that we were looking for. Great job by your department.
They saved a lot of money. We saved a lot of money, we, you know, we negotiated contracts that we lose some money on. And we found that two hundred fifty thousand dollars that wasn't paid to us from J F S two, that we brought back in the general practice. We did cut back on overtime, and we saved up some money there in overtime, we're like four hundred sixty hours left, so I should.
Thank you, thank you, uh, thank you, Sheriff.
General Fund, I think we should take from the Justice Fund, which is not too bad. That's all we've had.
Carrie, no, you're here.
Carrie Delgado, General Fund Veteran Service Commission. Uh, I had sent a letter over requesting that the Board of Veterans Service Commissioners receive an increase in their salary. The current rate is one seventy-five per meeting. We have, um. Four regular meetings a month, and we have one workshop now, so the second Tuesday of every month, we have one workshop for the entire room. Where we plan activities like Veterans Day, Oriole Day, um, those are things we're finding guest speakers, we're lining up. The program, we're getting volunteers, so these things take planning and lots of time. Um, I did write up something for you, uh, according to the V A, Trump County Veterans. Received over ninety-nine million in direct benefits, that's through healthcare, compensation, pension, education. Um, anything that V A is providing strictly to residents of Trump County. So those numbers are put out by the V A every year, state by state and by county. So all that can be verified. Um, those numbers reflect the hard work and training that the Veteran Service Commission staff have promoted to get benefits in the hands of our veterans. Uh, the Ohio Revised Code, um, is what governs our operations in our office, so Ohio Revised Code fifty-nine oh one. It's very specific to the services that we provide to our local veterans and the standards that we must follow. Commissioners attend training set forth by the state three times a year in order to maintain their status as Veteran Service Commissioners. And that's all monitored by Ohio Department of Veteran Services. Every month, our commissioners provide a report of activities that they have attended or participated in. These are duties outside of regular meetings, um, that are scheduled for business to be conducted in the office. Um, the Ohio Revised Code fifty-nine oh one point oh three, Article I. Lists as their job description, participating in appropriate memorial and commemorative activities to help promote patriotism. And veteran services, so they, it is a duty that they attend these programs. Um, it is a duty that they go back to the veteran organization that they represent, um, and provide reports. Um, so they have all of these extra duties, I went through from January to October. And all five commissioners had at least five, uh, the average, the average was five. We had one commissioner that only had four meetings outside of the regular four that we attend, so. My point is that we have four meetings a month where we conduct business, pay our invoices, just like your four meetings. Uh, but our commissioners are required by law to attend other outside activities, there are plenty of other duties that they are doing. Other than what is just being done at our, and our meetings last typically an hour to an hour and a half. Never had one under hour.
Do you have an agenda or anything for any of the last before meetings we could see? That would be nice, we can see an agenda of what, what actually they're talking about for the month, right?
Yeah, mm-hmm, and I do send over a monthly.
That's what I'd like to see, is an agenda of what you're meeting about, why meeting four times a month, when you're executive director. Handsome salary, what you get, why do you have to go to the board for every little thing that you do, that you have to meet an hour to do your job? I'd rather see the money go to veterans that need service, need help, I mean, it isn't a pot, uh, I mean, there, there's a certain amount here allotted. But I'd like to see as many dollars of that go to someone in need.
Right.
Not a retired board member that comes four or five times a month.
Right, and these board members are the ones who are in, their duty is hiring, firing, their duty is to set these policies in place.
And they're, and they're, and this board that we have also paid an, an, an executive director, put him on paid leave for over a month last year. That cost thirty thousand dollars, it could have went to veterans, because we wouldn't allow them to cash in. Sick leave, and that, that took money right out of needy veterans' hands that you could have used, that could have. Put people up in hotels, got them off the street, got them job training, done something, but they chose not to do that, this, these same board members that want the raise, right?
Those are, those are different pots, so, you know, outline items, and, and so the money that we have set aside for. Uh, veterans who need emergency financial assistance, that money is never pulled to go into any other direction.
We can't use the other money for veterans?
We can, we can transfer into that account.
Right.
Yeah, if we had excess funds somewhere, we could, we still had excess funds, but what these Veteran Service Commissioners are doing this year. Is giving away more money than we have given in the last five years. So what we're providing to direct services for veterans, right now, we're, we're passing out fifteen thousand dollars for Thanksgiving dinner. So we are providing more services, their duty as commissioners is to put these programs in place. To sit here line by line and ensure that we're reaching every single veteran that we can, getting out information so we can get. To nursing homes, get people to come in and, you know, get these ninety-nine million dollars worth of benefits that are paid.
What is that compatible, because every county has this, what do other board members get paid around us?
Um, Mahoney County Veteran Service Commission, their commissioners get paid, uh, six dollars and eighty cents an hour for eighty hours.
For a period? For a period?
Yeah.
For two weeks?
For two weeks. Geoga County, I called and did all the research, so Geoga County Veteran Service Commission, they get paid six hundred dollars a month, monthly stipend, one meeting they attend. So every commission is different.
You set the number of meetings they should have?
They do. So it's, it's at their discretion, um, so I, I spoke to Summit County, Stark County, Geoga, Mahoney.
What were the other ones, or a few more?
Those, those two, uh, um, Ashabula, they do those differently. Um, Ashabula doesn't increase at the time of reappointment, so not all the commissioners make the same amount. When this commissioner gets reappointed, they make this much, and then when.
What's the highest that one of them is making, do you know?
I don't know, because it, it would, it didn't really compare to what I was looking at, so I'm looking at monthly meeting amount. How much is, for them, all five commissioners make a different amount. That's Ashabula.
The other question I'm curious, um, they don't get paid mileage or anything like that, do they?
No.
So when they have to travel somewhere, that's all at their cost?
Yeah, typically, I mean, we just purchased the traverse, so the permissioner, if they.
I mean, if they go from their house to Bristol for a meeting, they get zero mileage, okay, and, uh.
We do cover the hotel stay, their training is in Columbus, so we cover, uh, per diem and hotel costs, but they don't get mileage, no.
But they could take the company vehicle. But they get to the company vehicle.
They can take the count.
And, and the boards, uh, return money each year for the last few years, correct, I think this year you said you thought you were gonna return two hundred fifty thousand?
Yes. And that's just an estimate, I'm sure it'll be more.
And last year returned in year, I mean, every year.
Last year was three hundred thirty one thousand, that's also part of this VA. It, it all comes out, how much is not spent. Um, so what we did not request that we could have last year was over four hundred thousand and we returned. Three hundred thousand of what. We also did request, so that's seven hundred.
So what you're saying is that maybe four times a month.
And one workshop, so that's five.
That's, and they want.
How many board members?
Five.
So it's five thousand a month, we're paying.
Yes, so, so they wanted a thousand dollars a month. Attend those four meetings.
Interesting. Yeah, for five meetings, it'd be five thousand.
Eight hundred and seventy five.
Have they increased those meetings over the last couple of years? Or, or could we decrease, or could we decrease some of those meetings, say like it's taken from five down to three? If they were granted a raise.
I don't know, um. We bring emergency financial assistance, so we go into executive session to go over veterans who need assistance with rent, food, utilities. Uh, so they are the ones who determine who gets granted financial assistance, not myself, it is the board. So. They sign off invoices, they're the ones approving. Veterans who have needs, property tax, we had someone who just.
But Giaga does it in one meeting.
Giaga does one meeting. Their veteran population is not the same as ours, we have more veterans than you.
How much they get a month? Six hundred a month for one meeting.
I mean, that one meeting could last four hours, I don't know, you know, I don't know how they come up, it's, it's very different, all eighty eight counties do it different.
I mean, this, this board for the veterans, it's kind of unique from a, just an average board, I, I think.
Much like yours, we've never had this issue come up before that we had to explain why we were requesting an increase.
When's the last time they had?
Twenty nineteen.
You know, for his comments on this.
I did too, and I.
I, it's. Do we want to? Add this, it was, it was on the agenda last week. Carrie did make a presentation, Commissioner, you had mentioned that. Somebody was gonna come and make a presentation.
Did we make a thing in stipulate? Four meetings a month? Let them figure out what's. Don't they understand that, but if we're paying?
It's an autonomous board. You're not gonna be able to.
Can we cap it at a thousand?
That's kind of what the judge said also, you know, he wants them.
They can be reappointed if they get too big for the.
I mean, Carrie, you, you feel very comfortable.
Do you enjoy Memorial Day and Veterans Day programs? They plan every single aspect of that. We go to the city, we reserve the city, set up the food, there's open houses in the community. Uh, we have. Three service officers of benefits, we have eight total in the office.
So you got eight people doing stuff, but the board sounds like they do everything with all that stuff?
Well, they attend D A V, VFW, every VFW, uh, post. In Trumbull County is being visited by Jim Yost, our VFW commissioner. Well, he's, he's actually commissioner for AMBETS, but he's also a member of VFW, so they belong to multiple organizations. Um. The Vietnam Wall that came, BBA is Vietnam Veterans of America, Ron Curry represents the BBA. So when they have the guy in the cage and it's POW MIA, they have the big things that happen in Trumbull County. That's who's part of that organization that's getting those things done. I can provide you a copy of the report that they turn in every month. That shows exactly what meetings they have attended outside of our regular meetings, if you need. Any kind of assurance, uh, we have open meetings every Thursday at ten AM. More than welcome to come.
Uh, uh, why don't you do that, because this would not take effect until January first anyway. Correct? So, you know, anything that you can provide us, help us make that decision. Because even if we voted on it now, it would be effective in January.
Yeah, I, I'd like to see the last four meetings, the agenda for the last one.
Perfect.
And then. Or if they had five meetings, why or what it was, or.
We don't have a, a, agenda.
But you have a day, they, they had a workshop, it lasted minutes.
I, I think the other thing that I, you might be missing is, is. Maybe they're not at the meeting, but they're at home or they go somewhere and, and they're. Stuck in veterans.
That costs, that's, that is part of their job, so it's not just.
Right.
They come to, and you know, if, if the assumption is that they're going to a meeting for thirty minutes. Once a week, and this is what they're making, that is not the case, the job duties work.
Do they only get paid for the meetings, or say they, say they go to Veterans Day ceremony, are they paid for that?
No, sir.
So it's just a meeting?
Only the meeting where business is.
They only get paid for that, but they're, they're doing far more than.
Wired, right.
You know, that was an hour and a half on Veterans Day up at the, the church, like, time prepping for all that.
Right.
For and after. I, I, I get it, I understand it. I, I just think. Commissioner needs a little bit more clarification on it.
Yeah, absolutely, that's why I wanted, I, I wanted you to make a well-informed decision, so if I need to come and, and, you know, speak of. These are the good things that they're actually doing, you know, you don't see it.
Oh, I, I know they're doing a service, I have no doubt.
Scenes, um.
And I said, I guess with sticks in my craw is.
And, and I.
We did have that issue in November, December, and they. When we wouldn't do what they wanted, they said, well, they put a guy on paid leave, let him work two jobs and get paid. And the taxpayers paid almost thirty grand for this guy to not be there at work, while they paid you and him.
And that was.
Him not even to be there, and that was the board's decision to do that, to get around violating our policy and procedures, we told them. This was against policy and procedures, this is against the law to do this. You can't do that, and so they swelled, they found a backdoor way and said, we'll pay anyway and. Kind of thundered those of the commissioners that we're gonna pay anyway, and it's the same guys.
That was a manipulation tactic, that wasn't.
It was, it was a manipulation tactic, but it. These board members are the ones that cost the tax grants. I would have, like I said, I would rather see the money go to.
You're looking at, you're looking at five hundred a month, basically commissioner, six thousand a year for the additional.
Yeah.
So that's about what we're up, up against. All right, and then Carrie, you'll provide that additional information and we can move forward with a decision. So we'll table it till then. Okay.
Thank you.
Carrie?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for what you do, appreciate. Does anybody have anything, oh, I meant to ask, elevator? Daryl, is that the one that was repaired?
Actually, the other side was repaired before.
Did they do, ever do anything to that elevator that's broke down? What?
There's a forty thousand, there's a forty thousand dollar part, am I correct?
Correct.
That I would have lost my mind. If they would not have covered, they're covering it.
They are?
Yeah.
Okay, that was my.
Because I would have lost my mind.
Okay.
They, they were both just fixed for eight hundred thousand, weren't they?
I would have really lost my mind.
That was prior to, to Harlan and I, but yes, those were. Replaced. So, yeah, replaced, so, uh, that makes sense to be covered, but.
They tell you how long that would be, like people asking me.
Few days, isn't it just a few days before the part.
So they sent the part out to have it repaired. And, um, they will give us an update Friday. On, on the repair time.
Well, that's good news that it was.
We're not breaking steps for exercise. I mean, I took them today.
Oh, did you? Got your counter on you? Okay, well, commissioners, I. Got any further?
Well, I guess, I guess. Where are we with that? Molinex invoice? Do we have to address that, or do we not have to address that? The prices of cars, the. The police cars that came in a different price and made that back and forth.
Yes, we have to, we have to address that, I have not had a moment of time to even address that with them.
But we paid what we said we were gonna pay.
For those cars, there's, the dispute is like, for what, thirteen hundred dollars? And that will have to, I have to dig into that.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah, that wasn't Molinex, that was Montrose.
Montrose, I'm sorry.
That's why I had no idea.
Oh, I'm sorry about that, I just want to make sure we covered it, so it wasn't.
I do what I'm supposed to.
I got a meeting with, can you meet with Tony?
Yes.
Okay, and then, because I got a meeting with Diane. And then. Motion, we need a. Motion, Commissioner?
Yes, motion to adjourn.
Mr. Malory?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yeah.
Mr. Fernando?
Yes.